Alright, good evening everyone. We would like to welcome you to the South Salt Lake Regular Meeting. It is Wednesday, October 29th, 2025. The time is 7:01 PM. My name is Charlotte Bynum. I will be conducting tonight. Speaking of that, I'm conducting because we're excusing Nick. He could not make it and we're excusing Cory. Is Paul joining us online? Okay, we are hoping that Paul Santos will be joining us soon. We'd like to welcome all the rest of the council staff, anyone here visiting and anyone watching us online. We will go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance and I will turn the time over to Clarissa. Good evening, please rise. Thank you, Clarissa. We'll move on to no action comments, starting with scheduling.
Yes, thank you. This Friday is Halloween, as you all know. And we will be holding a spooky City Hall here from 3:00 to 4:45. So come see all the fun decorating all the departments have done. And then Public Works is still offering fall leaf bags for residents. You can visit them on the fourth floor and just bring a valid ID showing that you are a South Salt Lake resident to pick those up. And then you can just leave those bags outside your park strip and they will be picked up. And then fall cleanup starts November 3rd. Eligible residents should be receiving a flyer shortly if you haven't already. And then the next City Council meeting is November 12th at 7:00 PM. Thanks.
Thank you, Ariel. And we really, I appreciate how... And so those of you that didn't notice when you came in, we do have upcoming city events now listed and you can grab a copy. Because we do know sometimes we go through these things very quickly. So make sure you grab a copy. Alright, public comment and questions. At this time, if you have any public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name, the city in which you reside or represent, and keep it under three minutes.
I'm gonna do my best. This is my first time. You all know my boss, Kim Welch.
Oh yeah.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Baker and I'm the Assistant Manager of the Granite Branch of the County Library. I am here to share some of the exciting programs and events happening at Granite in November and December. Now through November 6th, we are hosting a Community Ofrenda courtesy of Mentos Actives. Patrons are encouraged to bring in a photocopy of their loved ones to place on the altar in memory. November 1st is an all-day International Games Day celebration. This is an all-ages open play event and there will be snacks. November 4th, Granite is a voting site for the municipal general election. We also have a mail-in ballot drop-off in the southport-east portion of our parking lot. The branch will open at 7:00 AM for in-person voting and for regular library activities at 10:00 AM. Voting and mail-in ballots must be turned in by 8:00 PM that day. November 7th, Take Care Utah will be at the library to assist patrons with accessing and applying for health insurance programs like Medicaid, CHIP, the Affordable Care Act, and Medicare. Meetings occur with a volunteer in a private meeting room. December 1st is the first day patrons can drop off their gingerbread houses for the Fourth Annual Granite Gingerbread House Display and Contest. And trees are accepted December 1st through the 12th, and there are no rules. Bring your finest shack, mansion, or favorite South Salt Lake building rendered in gingerbread and gumdrops. December 13th, we are hosting a Scandinavian-inspired huga party with warm drinks, sweet snacks, and a cozy craft. A virtual fire will envelop you in comfy vibes. Lastly, Granite Library is a site location for Kids Cafe, a free meal program provided by the Utah Food Bank and the US Department of Agriculture. The cafe is open Monday through Friday, 3:45 to 4:45 PM for kids 18 years old and under. The meals are shelf-stable, nutritionally sound, and for some of our youth patrons, the only reliable source of food they will eat that day. Please share this resource with your South Salt Lake constituents. We invite all of you to visit us during one of our cafes so you can see firsthand how these programs feed our South Salt Lake community kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being such great partners with South Salt Lake.
Hey. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the event list being printed because I try and write them down and know about this stuff and I know I've asked several times for the events to be repeated and the copies being placed there is something I and I'm sure other residents appreciate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright, and anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is Ryan Gorn. I'm the new president of the South Salt Lake Firefighters Local 4080. And I just wanted to introduce myself to you guys and give you guys a little speech that I prepared for you. So it is with a great pleasure that the South Salt Lake Firefighters Local 4080 announces that our endorsement of Mayor Wood, Councilwoman Clarissa Williams, Corey Thomas, Charlotte Bynum, and Councilman Ray DeWolf. Under the leader, under the leadership of Mayor Wood and the City Council, Chief Addison and the Command Staff of our Fire Department, we have seen our city growing and improving in so many ways. Our Fire Department has ended the part-time program and had transitioned into a full-time career agency. Twenty-one full-time positions have been added which greatly increase our ability to respond effectively to incidents within our city and to our neighboring municipalities. Our outdated fleet that had been in operation well beyond their anticipated lifespan will have been entirely replaced once our new ambulances come online. We put into service a state-of-the-art ladder truck to serve our city. As we see the installment of high-rise developments, this ladder truck can navigate narrow complexes with ease, something our previous truck would not have possibly done. We have two brand-new engines with a clean cab concept to not only better protect our community, but our firefighters who serve within it. A clean cab concept decreases the exposure of our firefighters to the ever-increasing carcinogens we are exposed to as cancer rates among firefighters climb. The public safety tax that was enacted in order to give our firefighters a competitive and livable wage has taken our department from a stepping stone agency into a destination department at a time when the hiring pool has dwindled. The candidates that these changes have attracted have paid dividends in the quality of firefighters our agency attracts. Further proof to demonstrate the competency of our leadership is the attainment of an ISO Class 1 rating, which less than 1% of fire departments throughout this nation can claim. Only the South Salt Lake Fire Department and Salt Lake City Fire Department have earned this rating in the state of Utah. The investment our community has made in our Fire Department has translated to lower fire insurance premiums within our city due to our Class 1 rating, shorter response times for our residents, a fully-staffed Fire Department so that the hands needed to perform the required tasks are available, and adequate water supply when it's needed most. We encourage all residents to consider this information when casting their votes this November and regardless if your vote coincides with our endorsement, we encourage all to participate in our elections. Sincerely, Ryan Gorn.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing then, we will move on to mayor comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody some of the resources that we have with some of the things that are going on nationally. We do have 211.org for resources. We also have a community liaison team that works to help connect families with resources that might be needed. So reach out to them and then if you throw it up the housing issues, it's always easier for us to help you maintain your housing before you lose it. So please reach out to the promised community liaison team and just remember 211.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney comments?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Bree. City Council comments? We'll start with Ray.
Yeah, just a reminder, we have an election coming up and I'd encourage everyone, if you're eligible and able to vote, please do. That's it.
Clarissa. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't have anything either. Alright, I'll just echo what Ray said with elections. No matter who you vote for, municipal elections impact your life every day, all of the things. And I think some people underestimate that. And so I would just encourage you, no matter who you vote for, make sure you vote. I think so far the mail-in turn-in, you know, they're tracking how many ballots they've received so far and it's pretty low. So hopefully everyone votes. Alright, we will move on to information. Civilian Review Board's second and third quarter will invite Joy Gladup.
Fingers crossed this works. Good evening, council, mayor, city staff, fellow citizens, and people here in the community. First off, I would like to apologize for messing up the schedule at the last City Council meeting, but we will get this accomplished today. This is the 2025 second and third quarter reports. The Civilian Review Board, as it stands right now, has seven voting members, one alternate member, and we are still looking for a non-voting advisory member. These are the different types of use of force that we look at that our city officers have used at some point in the last three years. Here's our summary. So we have two summaries that you'll see on each page. One is for the second quarter, which is April through June, and the second one is the third quarter, which is July through September. For a total number of cases, the second quarter was 106. The third quarter was 69 cases. We reviewed 106 written statements in the second quarter and 69 written statements in the third quarter. And we requested and watched the body camera or car footage from 48 cases in the second quarter and 36 in the third quarter. With those, our findings were that we had a total of 106 cases reviewed in second quarter and 69 reviewed in third quarter. Zero of them were outside of policy and there were zero that were inconclusive. I do have good news, though. We have finally started catching up. So what our city representative is putting into our files, we're actually getting to those the next month. So we've made a lot of progress where we're headed. We did have one vehicle pursuit in the second quarter, none in the third. We did have two canine bites, one in the second quarter and one in the third quarter. I will tell you that what happened in April of this year and what happened in May, it just happened to be in different quarters because that was when they were reviewed by us. For significant discussions in second quarter, there were zero significant discussions and one significant discussion in the third quarter. And for those of you who don't know, significant discussion means we spend a lot more time speaking about that as opposed to coming to a conclusion fairly quickly. The total number of ride-alongs, we had zero in the second quarter and one in the third quarter. I do know there have been some more that have happened since then. Our second and third quarter training included body wraps. We had officers come in and there's pictures. I was the one who got body wrapped on the floor. So if you need that as proof, we've got those around. And then we also had a group discussion with the Utah Open Public Meetings Act. For citizen complaints, we had zero in both quarters and we have no recommendations at this time. There's my contact information that is attached to the agenda for any of the community if they have any questions.
Thank you, Joy. I'm gonna just speak for all of us. We appreciate what you're doing. We love to hear these great reports that our officers are doing a good job on the use of force. So thank you.
I as well. So thank you.
Alright, we will move on. I know we have a public hearing set for 7:30, so I'm challenging staff to get through this. Alright, number one, we will invite Spencer up to talk about the resolution of South Salt Lake City Council adopting the Meadow Brook and Mill Creek Station area plan. And if you'll just give a really quick overview, this is unfinished business. So we've heard this, but in case someone just tuned in.
Alright, thank you, council. Senior Planner Spencer Colley with Community Development. In the work meeting this evening, for those who were not able to join us, we discussed the Meadow Brook and Mill Creek Station area plan. This is a requirement of the state. This was from HB 462, which passed in 2022, which requires any municipality that has a fixed transit station to complete a station area plan for the area within a half-mile of that station. I just wanted to mention that we are required in this to complete four stations by the end of 2025 due to the number of stations that we have. And just last week on Thursday, WFRC certified our downtown connect plan. And the mayor was there and did a great job of representing the city and introducing the plan to WFRC. And we're excited to have those two down. And so that is part of the reason that this shorter timeline took place with this particular station area plan is simply due to the fact that we needed to have two more done before the end of the year. So if the council does pass the resolution this evening, that will ensure that we are in compliance with the state requirements of this bill. So if there are any specific questions regarding the presentation we heard earlier or about the process, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions, comments? Alright, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council adopting the Meadow Brook and Mill Creek Station area plans.
Alright, we have a motion from Ray, a second by Clarissa. We'll do roll calls starting with Ray.
Yes.
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 Spencer, you're gonna stay right there. And ordinance, we have a zoning map change. And so I'm gonna, again, we have heard this, but I'm gonna let you circle back for anyone who's new to this.
Great, thank you. Yes, we were here two weeks ago discussing the possibility of rezoning the property, the city-owned property at 2650 South Main Street. And as a reminder, this is a vacant property. It contains four parcels. And the request is to change the zoning designation from commercial neighborhood to city facility. We took this to the Planning Commission last week. We held a public hearing and received input from the public. And based off of the presentation and input from the public, the Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval, but has requested modifications to the recommendation. And that includes rezoning only the southernmost parcel, securing the northern three parcels from vehicle access, prohibiting overnight parking, enforcing the noise ordinance, and restricting any new lighting to be installed so that it doesn't bother the neighbors that are right there against the property. And one of the requests they also had in their recommendation was to sunset the zone change in 2027. Because of the feedback we received from the Planning Commission, staff visited the site on October 20th. And this was a multi-department visit, site visit. Part of the purpose of this was to develop a plan to help mitigate those off-site impacts. This plan is included in the packet. But it does identify the locations of where they intend to block the entrances or block vehicle access from the other areas of the property. It also limits the parking to the southern two parcels, which already have hard-surface parking. And the parking design that is proposed takes into consideration that the southernmost parcel, which was recommended by Planning Commission, to be the only location to have parking, it does require some repair and that will require funds to do so. So part of our recommendation does take that into consideration. So we have three options for council this evening. The first is to adopt staff's original recommendation, which is to rezone all the parcels to city facility. The reasoning for this is that it avoids split zoning the site. We can still limit the parking to the southern portion of the property and ensure that those mitigations are put into place. The only, the only thing that has not been carried over from the Planning Commission's recommendation in this is the sunset of 20, in 2027. And that's only because even if it were to sunset, we could still continue the use. And it would still be able to function as such. It would just change how we could go in and do maintenance of the site. Option two is to adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation, that is to rezone just one parcel, the southernmost parcel. And this does limit the management of the other parcels because they would be part of the other zone. But it does address all of the off-site impacts. And then option three is to adopt an alternative, which is to rezone the two southern parcels, which utilizes the existing hard-serviced area and will continue to maintain that buffer as requested by the Planning Commission. So our recommendation is to adopt option one, which is to rezone all the four parcels from commercial neighborhood to city facility with the following conditions: that public parking is limited to the southern two most parcels, that the city secure the two northernmost parcels with barriers to prevent vehicle access, clear signage prohibiting overnight parking, no new lighting is installed, and the county noise ordinance is enforced. And so I'll pull up the three options, but if there are any questions, happy to answer those.
I just have a quick comment more. I appreciate the Planning Commission really thinking through all of the potential issues. And I think this is unique because we are zoning it for city facility, where we know who the people are gonna be running it. And I appreciate that staff, multiple departments went down and looked at this. And so just my thought is, as we're looking at these options, I feel confident that as a city, we would be responsive if there were any issues. I'm comfortable with option one, but open to comments, questions.
Yeah. Question, do you avoid split zoning on option one? Why is that a drawback?
The only drawback is because of the way that the uses are categorized. City facility would allow us to do maintenance for city official uses. Even though it's city-owned, it's zoned commercial neighborhood, so that does limit us in some of the things that we can and cannot do.
So that correlates to bullet point number two on option two?
Correct.
Okay.
I think just looking back on the recommendations from the Planning Commission, it's great that we did see that because I don't think we would have thought something like that in that. So I do commend the Planning Commission for doing all that because I think we would have not thought about that and later on down the road we would. But yeah, thank you.
Can I ask exactly, why did they want it to sunset in 2027? I know you talked about it briefly.
Yeah, the reasoning to sunset is that they wanted to ensure that it didn't just sit as a parking lot forever. And we know that's not the intent. We also know that things do change and that, you know, we just don't know for sure what it will become, but we do know that the city does intend to develop it. It's just that timeframe isn't, isn't clear at this moment. So their intent was to ensure that it just didn't stay as a parking lot forever.
Okay. A technical question, if we approve the ordinance, do we have to specify on the slide before that those considerations are met within the ordinance or is that already written into the existing ordinance that we have?
The way that the ordinance is written currently, it does take into consideration these five. If you do want to include the sunset, you will have to include that in your motion.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? So when we make our motion, we would need to say option with option one, option two, option three.
Correct. I feel pretty comfortable with option one, knowing that these are in here being considered.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council to amend the South Salt Lake zoning map from commercial neighborhood to city facility for the property located at 2650 South Main Street, South Salt Lake City, Utah.
Motion from Ray, you have a second? A second? You have a second from Clarissa. We'll do roll call starting with Ray?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Spencer, for your recognition. Alright, we will get Crystal up here. We might be able to get maybe number three done before we go into our public hearing. So Crystal Bacon will be talking about an ordinance of South Salt Lake City Council amending section 3.11.020 of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify general fees. And this is unfinished. We've talked about it before. If you'll just give a quick overview for those who are new to this one.
Alright, good evening. So in June, well, excuse me. So as we reviewed the consolidated fee schedule, we found a couple of items in our general fees that needed to be updated. These are related to the charges for an insufficient or closed account and the charges for a customer stop payment that goes through our payment provider express bill pay. We're increasing the first one by $15, the second one by $1 to $15. The second one by $2 to $31. And that's just to match the fee that they charge us. And so that is the first item for general fees.
Alright. Any questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section 3.11.02C of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify general fees.
A second? Hey, we have a motion from Clarissa, a second from Leanne. We'll do roll call starting with Ray?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Crystal, I'm giving you another challenge. Four minutes on item number four.
Hey, thanks.
Let's go.
Alright, also with regard to our consolidated fee schedule, we're requesting that it be updated to reflect the current amount charged for residential solid waste disposal from $14 to $14.29 and also the cost of the additional waste container for the same amount. Those were voted in as part of the budget, so we're just updating our documents to match that. And then we're requesting an increase in our new can delivery fee from $25 to $50 to cover the cost of providing that service. And next, we're requesting that the late fee payment in this section be updated from $10 to 1.5%. That's just to make sure that it coincides with other portions of the consolidated fee schedule. And then finally, we're requesting an update in our glass recycling fee from $8 to $8.25. That fee was passed a year ago in November, and so we just need that updated as well.
Questions? Alright, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section 3.11.11.100F of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to make adjustments to the household waste and recyclable waste container fees.
Great, thank you.
We have a motion from Clarissa. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Alright, second from Leanne. We will do roll call starting with Ray?
Yes.
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 Alright, thank you, Crystal. I would, I would, I don't know, Carl, two minutes? I'm really, I'm really pushing you all tonight. My apologies if you don't like it.
That's okay. I think like last time, this will be fast.
Okay.
This is an item that we heard earlier today. For those of you that did not hear it, there have been some reports of safety issues on the Jordan River Trail where it meets 3300 South. There's a dark bridge there that has been reported to be quite unsafe feeling. And there were even a couple of assaults there where residents or victims did not have a place to go. So the county and some city staff applied jointly for a grant. We received the grant, but we need to pay a local match of $10,000. There's an inter-local agreement between us and the county that's proposed today to transfer the $10,000 from the city to the county to pay that local match to get this connection built. And the money's actually budgeted. We have room in a miscellaneous mobility fund that we have that we can transfer the funds over. So that agreement and the resolution are in the packets.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Alright, I'll make a motion. Alright, let's do it. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council approving an inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County for funding the, for Jordan River Trail to 3300 South Safe Access Project.
I have a second. Sorry, I have a motion by Leanne and a second by Clarissa. We'll do roll call starting with Ray?
Yes.
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 You all are so wonderful. Thank you for being so fast. Do you have a point of privilege?
Just, I have a point of privilege. Just a quick question. Do you know when that will be completed?
I don't. I do know that it hinges a little bit on the county budget process. We, like I said, we have the money, we did, well, the money for our match. They don't have a miscellaneous fund, so they, even though they're getting money from the county, they need like a fund that that county goes into that they can then pay their contractor. So they need to do a budget amendment to get started. Hopefully that's quick, but I don't know their budget process, but hopefully spring or summer.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Alright, my appreciation to staff tonight. We've been quick and concise, but yet detailed. Alright, Crystal, it is 7:31. We're gonna start. Crystal will give us some information. And then we will open a public hearing and receive any public input, then we will discuss with the council, so. Go ahead, Crystal.
Uh in our work meeting, I reviewed the proposed budget amendments. They affect the general fund, the capital fund, the um public safety special revenue fund, the stormwater utility fund and the transportation utility fund. Many of them are uh just carryover items from the prior year. Uh several of them also have to do with grants that we've received and a few of them uh relate to uh new needs or changes in costs that have occurred uh for some of our projects that we have ongoing at the moment.
I will now open up a public hearing. This is if anyone would like to make any comments or uh specifically about this budget amendment. You can now step to the podium. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will close that. Um any discussion or questions by the council?
I think I just wanna make a comment. Crystal, thank you for making this very transparent for us and also uh all the budgets online, so thank you for making it easy for us to understand.
Crystal, just um clarity on the four hundred thousand for the road project package.
Yes.
A lot of that was because the infrastructure was worse than we had anticipated.
Hmm precisely, yeah.
So I think that just goes to speak that how costly that is. And how much we need to be proactive in funding things.
I a hundred percent and how when we put things off, other things are deteriorating and it's just, yeah.
Yeah.
Totally agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, any other questions or concerns? Um if not, we have some options. Uh but I would recommend that we um entertain a motion that we pass the budget amendment as presented.
I'll make a motion that we pass the budget amendment as presented.
I'll second. Alright, we have a motion from Ray, a second from Clarissa. We'll do roll call starting with Ray.
Yes.
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 Alright, thank you. We do not have need for a closed meeting, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Alright, Clarissa's made a motion, Leanne has seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose? Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.